Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Atumal City Council meeting. I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order, and if everybody's in rise, we'll say we pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Chris will take the role.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Here.
Councilmember Rowe?
Here.
Councilmember Galloway?
Here.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Here.
Mayor Johnson?
Here.
The next item on the agenda is to approve tonight's consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
The next item is to approve tonight's city council agenda through your motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
The next item, the city administrators report to council and citizens. I'll turn it over to city administrator Phil Rath.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. I have two comments and then what's on the report here for the status of financial reporting update. First, I just wanted to mention, in light of last night's meeting with the resignation of Councilwoman Pope, there had been some question as far as procedure for how to fill that vacancy. And so the city council has two options for that. They can either replace that by appointment, or they could request to have a special election. And so that's a decision that will have to be made. Based on the timing of that resignation last night, it wasn't available to put onto tonight's agenda. We are looking at possibly a special meeting Thursday at four o'clock to make that determination. If they choose the process of appointment, they'll need to determine how they'd like to proceed with that appointment. But before that appointment is made, notice would be filed to the public of that intention. And then the public actually has a 14-day window to file a petition to request a special election. And they would need either 1,000 signatures or 15% of those who voted in the last election.
Four hundred fifty.
Four hundred fifty signatures would be required based off of that number, from the number of voters, 15% of that. So 450 signatures is the lesser of those numbers. If the city were to receive that, then that would prompt a special election to fill that. Otherwise, the council could proceed with appointment if that is the decision made Thursday afternoon. The other thing, just to recognize, Councilmember Rowe, who is looking at nearing his, and there may be some other comments, I just want to take my opinion here. So this was going to possibly be your last meeting, but in light of everything, Thursday, I'm guessing, will be that last meeting. But I just wanted to say thank you for all of your service. You are the last remaining council member from when I was hired. And so I thank you for, I hear you voted for me, whether you did or not. I thank you for giving me the opportunity to serve this city. It has been a pleasure. And I'm just happy to know that we'll be able to continue to work with your, work with GoPep, and I'll still have an opportunity to work with you to help improve and better the city as goals that we both share. With that, I will turn it over to Jessica Kinser, our finance director, to provide the status of financial reporting of the city votes.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Item number two on the consent agenda, I think, was proof of the progress that we have made so far. As I previously mentioned, we had closed out fiscal year '23. The annual financial report was published on the ninth in the newspaper, and all of that, we just got our publication today, or this week, got that submitted today, so that is taken care of. July and August are reconciled at this point, and we are still working on September, October, and November. But right now, we are at a point where all of that stuff needs to take a backseat because the audit has been scheduled for January 2nd through 5th, and we have a very large list of audit work papers that really still need to be done and ready to go by January 2nd. And there's not many working days between now and January 2nd. So once we get those, once we get through the audit, then that's when things will resume. Of course, we will still be working on things as we go, and there are a number of other items that will relate to September and beyond, moving forward later on in your agenda tonight.
Thank you. Yes, that's all I have tonight. Thank you, Honorable Mayor.
The next item on the agenda is where I ask if the public would like to speak on any of the agenda items that are on our agenda for this evening. I've not gotten any slips of paper, but I go ahead and ask if anybody wants to speak on any of the agenda items. Okay, we'll go ahead and move into public hearings. We have five of them tonight.
This is the time, place, and date set for a public hearing on the proposal to lease certain real property at the Atumal Regional Airport to the American Bottling Company.
I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. I believe J.D. Wheaton is going to present.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This lease deal with the American Bottling Company will be for five years, with the option to extend for two more five-year terms. This parcel of land is used for truck parking while it's waiting to be loaded at the docks at the American Bottling Company. This property will also be leased for $3,499 per year for the next five years, with a 5% increase over what the past lease was to be expired here at the end of this year. That is the maximum that they allow you to increase the lease. That's what was voted on by the airport advisory board at the November 28, 2023 meeting.
Does Council have any questions for J.D.?
I just have a comment. Again, I thank you for your forward thinking out at the airport and everything you do over there, too.
Thank you.
Since this is a public hearing, does anyone in the audience have any comment or question? Okay, if not, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second. Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Resolution number 202, 2023, approving and authorizing the lease of certain real property at the Atumal Regional Airport to the American Bottling Company. Recommendation pass and adopt resolution number 202, 2023.
Move the recommendations presented.
Second. Chris will take the role.
Any other discussion?
No.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's right. Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
This is the time, place, and date set for a public hearing on the proposal to lease certain real property at the Atumal Regional Airport to the American Bottling Company.
I'll go ahead and open the public hearing, and Mr. Wheaton is going to present.
This is very similar to the last one. It's just a different parcel of land for a little different dollar amount. This one here is for where their treatment facility is at, and is also a 5% increase over the previous lease. It'll be for $3,478. There has been some interest from them that they do plan to expand their water treatment facility, so as that goes, we'll make adjustments at those times. For now, we get the lease done so that it doesn't expire by the end of the year. This also was approved by the airport advisory board meeting on November 28, 2023 meeting.
Does Council have any questions for J.D. regarding this particular item? If not, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second. Chris will take the role.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Resolution number 203, 2023, approving and authorizing the lease of certain real property at the Atumal Regional Airport to the American Bottling Company. Recommendation pass and adopt resolution number 203, 2023.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
This is the time, place, and date set for a public hearing approving support and financial commitment for the Main Street Atumal program for calendar years 2024 through 2027.
I'll go ahead and open the public hearing, and I believe Phil Rath is gonna take this one.
Thank you. In 2006, the city was selected to participate in the Main Street Iowa program and entered into the program agreement with the Iowa Economic Development Authority, or IEDA. Continuation of the program requires an agreement stating the ongoing public and financial support from the city. A copy of the continuation agreement for calendar years 2024 through 27 is attached to the resolution for reference. A couple of meetings ago, Fred Sessiger presented about the program and the positive impact it's had on the community over the past. City funding for the program has been coming from the Westgate River renewal area, and for next year, it was requested the same $30,000 that had been in the past. That has been requested set aside in the Westgate River renewal area for next year. Future years depend on the requests and availability of funds in that district. But Fred is here, if there's any questions for him. Really, the only difference with this agreement, or the major difference, is the timeframe. In the past, it's been for two years. I think based on the success of the program, we requested it before, and anything over three years requires a public hearing. So we do have that posted, and follow the compliance in that regard. I don't know if there's any questions for Fred or anybody.
Does Council have any questions for Phil or Mr. Sessiger? Okay, if not, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Resolution number 204, 2023, approving support and financial commitment for the Main Street Atumal program for calendar years 2024 through 2027. Recommendation pass and adopt resolution number 204, 2023.
Is there a recommendation to approve, is there a recommendation to approve, a motion to approve the recommendation?
Sorry.
Second. Chris will take the role.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
This is the time, place, and date set for a public hearing on the disposal of city-owned property at 129 North McLean Street, Atumal, Waukato County, Iowa, to JMH Enterprises LLC.
I'll go ahead and open the public hearing, and Mr. Simonson, I believe you're gonna present.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This property is currently owned by the city. We acquired it. There had been a fire, and we demolished the house that stood there. The assessment wasn't paid back, taxes haven't been paid. We got title of the property. We haven't had it for very long. It's too small to be buildable under the current zoning code. The building that was there really took up almost a whole lot. So it doesn't require a development agreement by policy, and so the staff recommendation is to go ahead and sell the lot.
Does Council have any questions for Zach? Since this is a public hearing, does anyone in the audience have any questions or comments they'd like to make? Hearing done, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
And I guess I should say, the buyer intends to use it for parking for a apartment building that he has on that same block.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Resolution number 209, 2023, approving and authorizing the conveyance of certain real property known as 129 North McLean Street, Atumal, Waukato County, Iowa, to JMH Enterprises LLC for the sum of $500. Recommendation pass and adopt resolution number 209, 2023.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
So moved.
Second. Any further discussion? None, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
This is the time, place, and date set for a public hearing on the disposal of city-owned property, city-owned vacant lot number 214 on Morris Street, Atumal, Waukato County, Iowa, to Roland and Linda Davis.
I'll go ahead and open the public hearing, and Zach's gonna present on this as well.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So the city's owned this property for quite a while, at least five years, so the price would be $250 rather than $500. The property's 45 feet wide, which is not buildable under the zoning code without an administrative relief. And as long as we've held it, the staff recommendation is to go ahead and sell the lot. The purchaser would be the owner of her adjacent rental property, and they would just be using it for green space and possible future need for a garage.
Does Council have any questions for Zach? Since this is a public hearing, does anyone in the audience have any questions or comments they'd like to make? If not, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Okay. Chris will take the role.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Resolution number 210, 2023, approving and authorizing the conveyance of certain real property known as a vacant lot number 214 on Morris Street, Atumal, Waukato County, Iowa, to Roland and Linda Davis for the sum of $250. Recommendation pass and adopt resolution number 210, 2023.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
So moved.
Second. Any further discussion? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Ordinance number 3220, 2023, amending the municipal code of the city of Atumal, Iowa, by repealing and replacing Chapter 1, Article 4, Iowa Income Offset Program for the purpose of complying with the revised state program. Recommendation pass the first consideration of ordinance number 3220, 2023.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
So moved.
Second. I believe, Chris, you're gonna present on this.
Yep. So Section 8A, Title 4, the Code of Iowa, provides for the offsets of payments made by state of Iowa agencies to satisfy liabilities owed to Iowa government agencies. The city of Atumal began the income offset program in August 2015. The Iowa Department of Revenue has taken over the offset program from the Department of Administrative Services effective November 13, 2023. With the change of administration comes a change of name to the program. It is now called the State Setoff Program. The city of Atumal submitted their application to the state to be considered for the program and assigned login information. Once this is received, the city will need to enter all of their current liabilities from the previous system, which is approximately 780 entries, into the new format.
Is there any questions for Chris from Council? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Waive the second and third considerations, pass and adopt ordinance number 3220, 2023.
Is there a motion to approve that recommendation?
So moved.
Second. Chris will take the role.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Presentation of annual city street finance report for fiscal year 2023. Recommendation, receive confirmation from report reviewing fiscal year 2023.
So we don't go and need to vote on this, so I'll turn it over to Phil Rath, our city administrator.
Thank you. Yeah, so clarification, this is a report, part of the filing is required to ensure that the report was given, and so it's in the minutes and recorded. And one of the last things is we need to put in what meeting we're going to report this on, so they can refer back to it if needed. So no action is needed, but I will present on this. This is an annual report. It's required by IOTOT to be filed. It is a reflection of the financial activity related to streets, including the road use fund, capital projects, general maintenance. If we do not file this report, or cities that don't, are ineligible for future funding from the road use tax. It is withheld until the report is issued, and if it gets passed, I think it's March 1st, actually, all the funds they withheld, they will keep and not turn over to the city. So we want to make sure this is done. It is filed with the state. I noticed tonight, this meeting, that we are reporting it. And so I was gonna hit some highlights with this report. It is a look back, in this case, at fiscal year 2023. So this is a reference of what was spent. It looks at the expenditures for that period, which in 2023, across all of those various funds, the city spent about $12 million. And so this is for general repair and maintenance of streets, snow plowing, street construction, all of those things. Revenues was about $12.3 million, and that's going to be money coming from the road use tax, from various funds, special funds for benefits, whatever it might be, the local option sales tax. And then it looks at bonds and loans, and again, this is only those portions that are related to roads. So if you see in here, under the bonds and loans, the numbers that are there, that is, if you look at the loan payment itself, it's going to be larger than that. This is only going to reflect the percentage of it that was towards streets. And so that's why that number's a little bit less. That's only those bonds and only that street portion. The next couple pages are a list of equipment that the city has. And one of the nice things about this is you can look at the street finance reports across the state, and you can get the inventory of the equipment. So if there's something that we might need where it's a one-time use, we can go out there and see if there's some neighboring community that has that piece of equipment that may work out something where we can utilize that without having to go out and purchase something. So there's a nice feature there. And then finally, there's the street projects line, and that, again, this isn't looking at all the projects that we have done, this is only the projects that were completed and final within that fiscal year. So for instance, you could have 90% of the project done in one year, and in July of the next fiscal year, it closes out. It's gonna be reported in that following fiscal year, not the one where 90% of that work was done. But of these four projects here, that totals about $4 million of street construction work just in an annual report. So, but I think, you know, looking at this report is a good way to reference the work that is being done in the streets and street construction and with repair and maintenance. And as I mentioned, it's just something that we need to file on an annual basis, and we're presenting it before you tonight.
Does Council have any questions for Phil? Okay.
Belt filter press repairs for water pollution control facility. Recommendation, approve the budgeted repairs totaling $52,773.30 for the belt filter press for water pollution control facility.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
So moved.
Second. I was gonna say Philip Hertmeyer, you're not Philip Hertmeyer. You're John Lloyd. Okay, Mr. Lloyd, it's all yours.
Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers, this is to approve a quote to purchase two dry rollers, two sets of bearings, top and bottom boat press, one press roller, 12 block bearings and installation, which includes two technicians for three days in the amount of $52,773.30. Discussion, this is to repair the belt filter press. The belt filter press takes a thin waste sludge, about 2-3% solids, and separates it into a cake, which is about the consistency of Play-Doh, and clear wastewater. By using the belt filter press, we change the amount of solids to the end product, basically the Play-Doh. If it is left, the thin waste sludge for the amount of solids, it's about 2-3%, after pressing, the sludge solids rise to about 13% to 18% solids. We can get that much water out. We're reducing the amount of water in the sludge, and water is weight, and weight is money. We press to save money. The sludge press is over 20 years old, and it's had minimal maintenance done to it. A portion of this quote is to have manufacturing technicians come in and show us how to replace the items in the future. There are 17 rollers, 34 block pillow bearings, and the two belt presses, there are two belts that press the waste. As far as our records show, we've only changed the press belts. We budget $735,000, with the expense of this being $52,773.30. That would leave $574,947.70 left.
Does Council have any questions for John? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution number 211, 2023, authorizing the withdrawal of interest earned in the city of Atumal's Iowa Public Agency Investment Trust, also known as IPAT, for fiscal year 2024 and 2025. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number 211, 2023.
Move the recommendations presented.
Second.
Okay. Jessica, I believe you're gonna present on this.
Yes, so part of the city's investments are held in what we refer to as IPAT, which is a public investment trust. And as I had kind of noticed over the last fiscal year, and then I went back and looked in the system, going back as far as 2018, and the city of Atumal has never taken the interest disbursements. Now, that was probably not a very big deal, in the times where interest was like $400 a month, and there wasn't much there. But we are now in that area of getting about $70,000 of interest each month. And so the resolution before you tonight proposes that we would take our drawdown of that interest on a monthly basis for the fiscal year that we are in right now, so that would go back to authorize us to go back to July of 2023 to start making those drawdowns. And how that interest gets allocated out is basically, we look at what are those cash balances in each fund at the end of a month, and then for the month that that interest is for, you divide that up basically in a proportional way based on those balances. So it's not bringing in new money to a specific fund or anything. Quite a few of the funds already have interest budgeted for them, but just not at the levels that I think we will see for the remainder of this fiscal year and potentially into next fiscal year as well.
So I guess I have a question. Is there any restrictions on how those drawdown funds can be utilized?
They just become the revenue of, a general revenue in whatever fund they're in. So to, for whatever the road use tax fund would get, those interest, that interest amount would be used for road use tax purposes, or for like sewer, would be used for sewer purposes. But in the general fund, they're just considered a general revenue.
Does Council have any questions for Jessica? Okay, if not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Resolution number 213, 2023, awarding the contracts for asbestos abatement and demolition of the condemned property at 206 East Finley. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number 213, 2023.
Is there a recommendation to, is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
So moved.
Sorry.
Okay, Mr. Simonson.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Council. The next two items are bids for asbestos abatement and demolition for two properties. And the first thing I wanted to say for these is that we usually get three, maybe four bids. We had a total of seven firms put in either one bid or two for these projects. And there's a couple of people that I think should get credit for that. The first is Travis. I think having a public information officer has put that word out, and having somebody focus every day on sharing what's going on at South, because we did have two firms from the Des Moines area that had never bid before, bid on these projects. The other is, I want to recognize Jake Rush as well. There were two local contractors who were interested in this area and have come with a lot of questions to him, and he's helped them understand the expectations and how the program works. And Don Jones and Torres Construction both submitted bids for the first time as well, based on, you know, his help kind of getting them together there. based on, you know, his help kind of getting them together there. This first one here is for two oh six East Finley. Six bids for asbestos and five for demolition were received. There is a box on each bid form that asks whether you would be willing to portion your bid, or whether you would only accept it if you had won both, your combined total was enough to win both. Torres Construction submitted the best bid in the amount of four thousand for the asbestos removal, and he did not check the box and said he wouldn't split his bid. So he, our recommendation is to award him for the asbestos abatement. And then Don Jones submitted the best bid for demolition in the amount of seventy-two hundred, so it'd be a total of eleven thousand, two hundred. And so staff recommends awarding each of them the contracts for the portion of work that they had the best bid for.
Council, have any questions for Zach? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Resolution number two fourteen, twenty twenty-three, authorizing the contracts for asbestos abatement and demolition of the condemned property at five fifty-six South Ward Street. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number two fourteen, twenty twenty-three.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation? So moved. Second. Okay, Mr. Simonson.
All right. And this is for the property at five fifty-six South Ward, also condemned property. Five bids for asbestos abatement, five bids for demolition were received. In this case, the lowest bid for asbestos abatement was one thousand dollars from Weston McKee, but he did check the box that I referred to, so we couldn't separate his bid out. And his demolition bid was the highest of the demolition bids. And so his was not the best bid then for asbestos abatement. The best bid was Torres Construction, who did not check the box and bid twelve hundred. The best bid for demolition was again, Don Jones, the amount of five thousand dollars. So it'd be a total of six thousand, two hundred dollars for the demolition of this house. And staff recommends awarding them each the contracts for the portions where they had the best bid.
Does Council have any questions for Zach regarding this property? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Resolution number two fifteen, twenty twenty-three, approving the final plat of Kristner's second subdivision in the City of Atumwa, Waukamo County, Iowa, and rescinding resolution number ninety-nine, twenty twenty-three. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number two fifteen, twenty twenty-three.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
So moved.
Second. Okay, Mr. Simonson.
Thank you, Mayor. Everyone on the council, except for Councilman Hoffman, might remember that this summer, we considered the exact same plat, but the title was Kristner's First Subdivision. It since came through that there was a previous Kristner's First Subdivision that hadn't been recorded, and has since been recorded. And so they're looking through kind of the process to how to sort that out. The best recommendation was to just submit this one again, under the name Kristner's Second Subdivision. And so this resolution will rescind the resolution that approved this plat under the previous name. It doesn't rescind the other Kristner's First Subdivision from twenty eighteen. That one has finally been recorded, and is now good and in effect. It would just rescind what we did this summer when we approved this plat. But no other changes have been made to the plat besides the title. What it does is it takes four lots, and it basically changes how they were laid out. They were laid out so that they faced, I think, north and south, and now they'll, sorry, they were laid out to face east and west, and now they'll be laid out to face north and south. That allows them to have front engine long streets that are gonna be more compatible with doing the four-unit housing development there that's already under construction.
And this is gonna be more upper income housing, correct?
I believe so, yeah. There're gonna be market rate single-family homes for sale.
Does Council have any questions for Zach? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Resolution number two sixteen, twenty twenty-three, approving updates to the personnel policy. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number two sixteen, twenty twenty-three.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation? So moved. Second. Okay, our HR Director, Barb Peller-Jones, here.
Thank you, sir. So for the majority of this, this is just updates and cleaning up some of the things in our personnel policy. One of the first things, though, that we did add is under our nepotism policy, given some of the sensitive information that some of our different departments and administration cover, and it kind of is far-reaching to all of the different departments. One of the things that we talked about was that it would be in our best interest to ensure that we do not have family members of people that are in these administrative roles, working in some of those outlying areas. And again, simply just due to the nature of the information that they see on a daily basis. So that is the one change that we would make to the nepotism policy. Everything else, like the benefits, we just kind of moved some things around. Under the holidays, we added, just in the fiscal year, right now, it just says in the year. So again, this just clarifies that it was fiscal year. The sick portion of that, one of the things when we changed the, for the police department, because they work twenty-one eighty-four instead of our twenty-eighty hours, we had adjusted all of their accruals. I failed to adjust the dependent sick. So we still get two weeks, but for our, any of our employees that work twenty-one eighty-four, two weeks for them is eighty-four hours instead of eighty. So it's just, it's cleaning that up. We added, since we have signed the contract and everything with our EAP, we added the specifics into the personnel policy for the new company. We've got phone numbers in there and kind of the step-by-step process. We are still on track to roll that out as of January one. I finally got a clean version of the contract today. So that's just adding that into there. And then just updating the, we don't have a personnel officer, so under the grievance process, just change that to human resources director.
And just for transparency for the public, can you identify what department you want to change as far as no relatives working in for the nepotism section?
Yeah, it would be our administrative. So it would be like the city administrator's role, HR, finance, city clerk's role. And again, simply, we touch all departments, so it was one of those that it really kind of makes sense. IT is also one in there. But it's just because we touch all of those departments, and there is a lot of sensitive information, and information that is not to public record, when we start talking about FOIA requests, or disciplinary information, or different things like that, you know, finances, you look at, you get child support, garnishments, or things like that. So again, we don't want to put anybody into any type of situation where, you know, an employee is concerned that their confidential information is getting, that's not what we want.
Does Council have any questions for Barb? Regarding these changes? If not, Chris will go ahead and take the role.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution number two seventeen, twenty twenty-three, approving the transfer of funds through September twenty twenty-three for fiscal year twenty-three, and those for fiscal year twenty-four budget as processed by the finance department. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number two seventeen, twenty twenty-three.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
So moved.
Second. Okay, Jessica.
Yes, so as I mentioned before, we haven't closed September, because there are still some things that we were trying to do. September is that kind of first quarter of the year, and so that is the time where we would be doing some transfers of funds, namely for benefits, that there are funds that the benefit dollars are taken from Fund One Twelve, the employee benefits fund, and transferred out to others. So they're seeing that expense, and then we're basically reimbursing them. So when I talk about the interest side of things too, that plays into it, because if you haven't reimbursed those funds for the benefits they've paid, that impacts their cash balance as well, and what they would get in sort of an interest allocation. So that's a majority of what is on the list. There were also some fiscal year twenty-three items that we found as we started to go through the FY twenty-four budget and see that some things weren't done, namely ARCO-related for the city hall HVAC improvements, as well as for the shower house project. And then also, I think there's just a lot of confusion around the DARE contribution coming in from the school district, and how that was supposed to be spent and allocated. So there is some money that will be going into the police department request fund that was in the general fund, leftover from those DARE contributions, to support those actual costs.
So can you kind of clarify that for me, or are you saying that they just weren't recorded, or that there was funds that were taken out of the wrong account?
Just no action taken on them, that there was nothing budgeted, but it was something that I, it seems like there would have been a conversation about it each year. So for the fiscal year twenty-four budget, there is not an actual transfer budgeted for these DARE funds. We're gonna go ahead and put something in, so the authority is there. And if it's not on the list, I feel like you're not gonna remember it necessarily when the end of the year comes, so, and then moving forward into fiscal year twenty-five, we'll have something programmed in there too, so that this just becomes a recurring thing as long as that contribution still comes in.
Because that's been ongoing program for years. Yeah. Does Council have any questions for Jessica?
No, I would just comment that I appreciate your attention to detail, and the little thing, like, I mean, not little things, but the things that you've brought to us today, it's, it's been a great improvement, so thank you.
Anyone else? If not, Chris will go ahead and take the role.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Resolution number two eighteen, twenty twenty-three, authorizing the payment of certain expenses without, I should have added a word here, prior city council authorization, so my apologies. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number two eighteen, twenty twenty-three.
I'll make a motion to approve with the addition of that word. Second. Okay, Jessica.
Yes, so we are going to be making a change that will impact how you function in your role as well, and what you will see on the consent agenda, starting on the January sixteenth meeting. So it is traditional that governmental bodies are supposed to be approving the claims of the city, the payments that the city would be making prior to those checks being issued. And so our first opportunity to really make that change starts in January. So December twenty-ninth will be the last Friday that checks will just be cut as kind of a regular thing, and we will publish, you know, the accounts payable report in the newspaper for the month of December. And then basically, starting January second, which is our first day of business in the new year, department heads or departments will be bringing in the bills that they had to pay. And then the Thursday before the council meeting, when we have to get everything to Chris for the council packet, that is when a list of all of those items will be generated from the financial system. So it's not gonna be the most readable, easy-to-read list, but it's, it'll be pretty clear as to who's getting paid for what and what amount. And then that will be on your agenda for the January sixteenth meeting. And so those payments will not be mailed until the morning of the seventeenth. And so this really puts the power back in your hands to review what is out there to be paid. The resolution before you go says, hey, there are definitely some times where we need some exceptions. And so we have outlined kind of a list of exceptions, most notably looking at what is already happening with some ACH transactions out of our checking account, as well as just what are those things where we wouldn't want to be late, like your utilities and things like that, where you can incur a penalty. And because this is new, and I would say it's kind of standard, the city administrator gets to be a final say on whether or not something happens outside of the council meeting that is sort of not defined in this list, because we all know that we can't be precise in what we are thinking our future will be. So therefore, we want to leave some wiggle room that there might be something that we need to address before the council would be meeting again. And I will note, we get into some weird things right away with January being a five-Tuesday month, which is great for budget purposes and budget workshops, but it's not great to, for regular council meetings where you have a three-week delay between that last meeting in January and the first one in February. So we might run into some cases here that we hadn't really contemplated in this first month.
Does Council have any questions for Jessica? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Resolution number two twenty, twenty twenty-three, approving change order number eight, except the work is finally complete, and approving the final three requests of Lake's Branch sewer separation, Phase Eight Division One project after thirty days. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number two twenty, twenty twenty-three.
So moved.
Second.
That's not John Lloyd, it's Philip Hergman.
Thank you. So this resolution will approve change order number eight, which adjusts the project for as-built item quantities. Change order number eight will decrease the contract amount by two hundred and fifty-eight thousand, five hundred and six dollars. And for those of you who weren't here before, change order number seven was to add additional paving to the project, with the understanding that it would be, we were using the under rounds and other quantities. So that's why we have a two hundred and forty-seven thousand dollar increase, and then a two hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollar decrease right afterwards. The new contract sum is twelve million, one hundred and sixty-three thousand, seventeen dollars and twenty-two cents. Langman Construction of Rock Island, Illinois has completed the above referenced work according to the plans and specs. This resolution will authorize approval of change order number eight with a partial payment of two hundred and forty-six thousand, five hundred and ninety dollars and thirty-seven cents, a final payment to the amount of fifty-eight thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars, releasing all retainers we've made after thirty days. Barb, could you turn up that? Light switch off there.
This one?
Yep, I got a short presentation here that I wanted to give. Just kind of overview of the project. Think you'll have to get through. So a quick review of the project timeline for people who weren't here in twenty eighteen when it all started. The design contract was signed with B. String Kim in twenty eighteen. In twenty nineteen, in November, we started getting plats for easements. In January of twenty twenty, is when we got the license for BNSF railroad, two four under the railroad, and that was the kind of final thing we needed to move forward the project. So in February of twenty twenty, the council approved the final plans and specs with a project estimated at twelve point one million dollars. And in March of twenty twenty, the contract was awarded to Langman Construction of Rock Island, Illinois for eleven million, seven hundred and forty-two thousand and seventy dollars. Then April twenty twenty, we began construction, and construction wrapped up in October of twenty twenty-three. This kind of gives an overview of the project location. It extended from Iowa Avenue going west, mostly south of Main Street till you got to Birch, then it started heading north along Lake's Branch there. The yellow area is a hundred and twenty-one acres, which is a newly separated area that wasn't separated before. The purple area around Second Street was separated before I got here, so at least eight years ago, I don't know, ten, twelve years ago, maybe. And it was all recombined at Main Street. So we ran a new storm line along Main Street to catch all those storm lines that came down. So that added thirty-nine more acres of separation for a hundred and sixty total acres separated. All right. Can you hit play on that? Let's see if this works here. There's a drone video we have, kind of overviewing the project from the downstream end of the upstream. Nope. There should be a play button at the bottom. There we go. Yeah. So at the bottom of your screen here is Elm Street Pump Station. You see Poole's Truck Service and Iowa Avenue on your right. The red lines you're gonna see are the sanitary lines. That's actually a thirty-six inch line for most of the area. It changes to thirty where it deepens up, but then most of it, where it's real shallow, is thirty-six. He's flying north here with the drone. This is Chad Carlson, he just does these drone videos for us and puts together these presentations. Here you can see, this is kind of everything south of the road tracks, Hayne Street, Orchard Street, Iowa Avenue. New sanitary going north, a little bit on Orchard, that we had to put new sanitary on. And the rest of the areas, we reused the sanitary and put new storm line in. Then this is the chip-sealed area, so these were all gravel roads before. We were constantly getting complaints about dust, and so we ended up putting a foot of rock and then double chip-sealing it. Except for the intersection up here, it's concrete, just because chip-seals wouldn't really hold on, on an intersection like that. And Hayne Street got completely repaved in concrete. He's flying north right now towards Main Street. He'll pause a little bit at the railroad, you can catch the walkway going to the railroad avenue. So again, this is a thirty-inch sanitary sewer, which is really big for a sanitary sewer. And the bore, we're at one of the road tracks here. And a little bit of new storm line here as well.
When you bore under those railroad tracks, how do they do that so those tracks don't like collapse right when you're born in it?
There's a surveyor there making sure those tracks don't settle, but they bore through a steel casing pipe. And so you kind of auger out in front of the steel casing pipe, and you shove that steel casing pipe forward, so there's no void in front of that. It's all yours pulling it out of that casing pipe. And here's where that trunk line goes up to Main Street. The main line turns left, one going to the right is just a short surface line. And this is our new storm sewer here. The storm sewer served a dual purpose. It separated all that stuff that was north of Main Street, but all that stuff, that thirty-nine acres previously separated, it used to flow south of the tracks, down towards Hayne Street, and it would cause a lot of flooding issues south of the tracks. So by taking that thirty-nine acres off and sending it towards Lake's Branch, it helped, helped alleviate that. We haven't had any flooding since, but we haven't had much rain either, so, we're still kind of, we think it should be solved. Here's looking west on Main Street. The area around Cherry and Ash, both the sanitary sewer and the storm sewer are about twenty, the sanitary sewer is about twenty-four feet deep, and the storm sewer is about twenty-two feet deep. And it's kind of unique here, because the sanitary sewer is running east, down toward the bottom of your screen, and the storm sewer is running north towards Lake's Branch. They kind of, they're flowing in opposite directions, which doesn't happen very often, but it's ever trying to pull that flow off of Orchard, to stop flooding issues on Iowa Avenue. Now he's coming towards the upstream end of the project, that's the intersection of Birch and Main on the left-hand side of your screen. And the- And the sanitary sewer main turns north on Birch Street here. And the end of the project here is where Division Two starts. And he'll put the existing Blake's Branch Trump sewer on there too. You can kind of see how that that runs along here. That's where all the storm sewer was tied into now. Here you can see a little bit of actual storm sewer that we put in. And then again, new new pavement. Next slide here. So these these two overhead views are just kind of a summary of what we did. So on the left hand side, all the bright red you see is new sanitary lines. So everything going north from Birch up to Main Street, along Main Street. In total, there was eleven thousand, one hundred sixty, oh, sorry, nine thousand, five hundred and seventy-six lineal feet of sanitary sewer that was installed. This included forty-eight manholes. And there was also twenty-two hundred lineal feet of sanitary sewer services running to houses off of these lines. On the right hand side of your screen, the bright green is the new storm sewer. We put in eleven thousand, one hundred and sixty-five lineal feet of new storm sewer, a hundred and sixteen new intakes and thirty-four new manholes. Water Works had a big part of this project too. One point three four million dollars of water main was put in as well. It's a good cooperative effort between us and Water Works. Like I told you before, it it helps them because the street's already out, saves them money in the long run. But in the short run, they had to put all their money into these areas and maybe not some other areas that are also bad, but just not part of this yet. So anyway, there was eight thousand and twenty-seven lineal feet of water main installed, a hundred twenty-eight fittings, fifty-three valves, seventeen new water hydrants, and one thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven lineal feet of water services to their customers. These are just the numbers I told you before. And so you can kind of look at there. This is all the paving that was done. The dark gray is concrete paving. The light kind of gray dots on the bottom of your screen were the chip seal I told you about before. There was twenty-nine thousand, three hundred and seventy square yards of concrete paving done as part of this project, which is around seven thousand, four hundred lineal feet of street, which depending on the size of your block, is around twenty blocks of paving. And there was also five thousand, five hundred and ninety square yards of chip seal streets done, which is around two thousand, one hundred lineal feet of paving, which is maybe six or seven blocks worth of worth of chip seal streets. And there was also seven thousand, three hundred square yards of sidewalks and driveways. The last page is just a kind of a summary of the funding. The city of Atumwa spent ten million, eight hundred and eighteen thousand, four hundred and ninety-five dollars on this. And it was a mix of TIF, loss, road use and sewer fund sewer fund balance. And then Atumwa Water Works contributed one million, three hundred and forty-four thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars and twenty cents. So when Water Works works with us in projects like this, they pay for all the water main. They install all the valves, all the all the fittings, everything like that. But they also help offset some bar costs too. In this case, you can see one point three four million dollars. It was roughly eleven percent of the project. What we'll do is we'll take out the mobilization and we'll take out the traffic control. And whatever percent of the project was water main, we'll make them pay that portion of the mobilization. So they're they're helping us out to covering some of those fixed costs. Because the traffic control mobilization is the same, you know, whether we put water in or not. So the original estimate was twelve point one million. The original contract was eleven million, seven hundred and forty-two thousand, seventy dollars. The total change orders throughout the contract were four hundred and twenty thousand, nine hundred and forty-seven dollars and twenty-two cents. So the total contract was twelve million, one hundred and sixty-three thousand, seventeen dollars and twenty-two cents.
When you chip seal some of those streets, does that create a good base if eventually you're gonna decide you want to pave those? Or would that all have to be ripped down if you haven't decided to pay?
No, you could put asphalt on top of that. The streets are just so lightly used and they're relatively flat. So like I said, they were gravel before, so.
This is an improvement.
By putting, yeah, like I said, there's about twelve inches of sub base on there, then two layers of chip seal.
Does council have any questions for Philip on this project? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Resolution number two twenty-one twenty-three, approving change order number three, accepting the work is finally complete and approving the final payment request for the Blake's Branch Sewer Separation Phase Eight Division One East of Iowa Avenue Project after thirty days. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number two twenty-one twenty-three.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
So.
Okay, Philip.
Okay, so this is phase eight, division one. Just a little bit of background on this project. So when we went north from Elm Street and separated everything going north from there, then separated that thirty-nine acres off north of the tracks, we got looking at the area around there and thought, man, like, there's not much sanitary sewer left going Orchard. It wouldn't take much to take everything else off of there and and separate that out. So after Division One started, we got looking at it. And in June, we signed a contract with Bean, Strang, Kim to design this East of Iowa Sewer Separation Project. March of twenty twenty-two is when we finally approved the plans and specs. Estimated project, three million dollars. And then March of twenty twenty-two, we awarded the contract to Langman Construction of Rock Island, Illinois for three million, one hundred and forty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty-five dollars. Construction started in July of twenty-two and construction completed in October of twenty twenty-three. This is an overview of it. We call it East of Iowa because everything is East of Iowa Avenue. There were sixty-nine acres separated here, and we separated all known combined sewer flows to the Orchard Pump Station. We're gonna monitor, right now there's a crossover between the sanitary sewer and the storm sewer at Iowa Avenue, or Iowa Avenue and Hayne Street meet. There's a twenty-four inch line that connects the two. We're gonna put a flow meter on there, monitor that for a while, make sure there isn't anything we don't know about attached to the sanitary sewers. And if we find nothing attached there, we're gonna seal that crossover. And once we seal that crossover, there'll be no connection between that and the sanitary sewer. We'll monitor flows going out of Orchard for a while, make sure there isn't any signs of of contamination in the water. And our intent is to eliminate the CSO outfall at Orchard Pump Station in the long run. So this is, this project was kind of a scattering of of small areas where there were still intakes attached to the sanitary lines. You're starting here at the road crossing, Iowa Avenue, Main Street just to the north there. That line, storm line here is a continuation of what was put in with phase one. You can see what we added on there to the new storm sewer that was out in East of Iowa. A little bit on Mabel. That's how Mabel used to flow to Walnut Pump Station. And just everything worked out. We had the flow lines. We decided to pull some of that off as well while we were in the area. He's gonna fly north to the intersection of Main Street and Bambier and have to leave. Let's see, let's see, pans across. This will take a little longer to fly between spots because they're so far away from each other. It's not one continuous project. Again, the green lines are storm sewers. You can see the line extending up Main Street towards Adams and then a little bit more on Mabel Street, pulling those intakes at the corner of Mabel and the alleyway off of there. And then some new pavement on Main Street as well. We also reoriented Main Street and Romer Avenue. So they met at more of a ninety degree angle. It'll make it easier for larger vehicles or vehicles pulling trailers to make that corner. This is going up Bambier and Street now, eventually. So these intakes here used to flow south towards Main Street. And they would flow into that twenty-four inch combined sewer under Iowa Avenue that has a crossover in it now. These used to flow down to that area and flow to the storm sewer and go out Orchard. Now they go to Blake's Branch. We can see these were pulled off and they run down Bambier and now. Going back towards the intersection of Adams and and Main Street here, you can see how the the road's a little bit better. It's a directly across from Adams Street now, which is safer to have opposing roads here rather than have a road intersect in the mid-block area. There's just fewer conflict points here. And the bypass is over on the top right of your screen, just panned away from it. The pavement to the intersection was terrible too, where Main Street pulls off a rumor. So it helped, but repaved and all that. So this is the new storm sewer here, ties into a little bit on Main Street and it goes north on Adams. You can see here we're repaving Adams while this was like, while he's doing this drone flyby. It's an asphalt street now. We'll have that next council meeting, I believe. So he fast forwards this because it takes so long to fly there. He can't actually fly this fast. So this is on Second Street. And it's a new sanitary line flowing east. There was a combined sewer here. You'll see eventually with the the next still, you'll see where it used to combine with the with the line that flows towards what we call the East Main CSO. So we ran a new sanitary line here to pull the storm water off of that, or pull the sanitary flow off of that storm line. And the sanitary is running along Second Street here. You can see the new pavement there. This is Walnut, Walnut and Second. So we ran a new sanitary line that flows into the the sanitary line that runs through the ravine. And then the storm line we pulled off and we ran a new outlet for the storm line as well. So that's the existing sanitary used to run into. And now it's only sanitary sewer flowing to that and the storm sewer flows into the into the ravine. Now he's flying north here. The practice field is on your left right there. This is Fourth and Bambier. And there's a couple sets of intakes at this, these intersections of Fourth and Bambier. They used to recombine and flow towards in the in the sanitary sewer down to Orchard. It was again another cost of the flooding on Iowa Avenue. And so we separated those intakes, ran a line south to Plum Street here, pulled these intakes off of the sanitary sewer. And then they ran a new line going east into that ravine. See the new paving on the street there. So you'll see it highlighted here in a second. I said a lot of little areas, but they all combined to, you know, cause flooding issues on Iowa Avenue. This project was smaller. You can kind of see the scattered nature of the of the improvements we made. There's a group of sanitary sewer intakes and pipes that ran along Main Street and Mabel. And then you skip an area and you go up to Second Street there. We ran that new new lines up there. And then you have to go way north to see the sanitary sewer we pulled off up by up by Fourth Street. The total lineal feet there, there's no water main on this project. It was only sanitary and storm sewer. As I said, it was a little bit smaller project. There was four thousand, seven hundred and twenty-eight lineal feet of storm sewer installed, forty-three new intakes and eleven new manholes. One thousand, five hundred and seventy-nine feet of sanitary sewer were installed, nineteen manholes with that, and then four hundred and sixty lineal feet of sanitary services. Pavement, there was six thousand, five hundred and ninety-six square yards of concrete pavement put in, fifteen hundred lineal feet of curb and gutter and one thousand, one hundred and twenty-three square yards of driveway and sidewalk. We combined those because sidewalks go through driveways, so the quantities, they kind of blended together. So that's why sidewalks and driveways are in one line. If you go to the last slide, so two million of that was funded from CIP and the balance was brought in from road use. The original estimate was three million dollars. The contract was let for three point, or three million, one hundred and forty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty-five dollars. All the change orders combined lowered the contract price by two thousand, seven hundred and eighteen dollars and fifty-eight cents, which gave you a final contract price of three million, one hundred and forty-one thousand, thirty-six dollars and forty-two cents. This work has been completed according to the plans and specs. The change order number three reduced the quantity of the contract, the contract quantity by twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars and sixty-five cents. This resolution will authorize a partial payment of seventy-two thousand dollars, seventy-two thousand, thirty-five dollars and eighty-nine cents. And then a final payment in the amount of one hundred and fifty-seven thousand and fifty-one dollars and eighty-two cents, which releases all retainage we made after thirty days. I'll answer any questions about the East of Iowa Sewer Separation if you have any.
Council have any questions? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Resolution number two twenty-two twenty-three, approving the contract for the Elm Street and Bellows Avenue Reconstruction Project to Jones Contracting Corporation of West Point, Iowa in the amount of nine hundred and ninety-eight thousand, five hundred and fifty-four dollars. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number two twenty-two twenty-three.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
So.
Okay, Philip.
Thank you. I'll say this project involved two street projects being bid together. The first project was the full with full depth PCC reconstruction of Elm Street from Main to Second. On this project also included some new storm and sanitary sewer. The second project was a full with full depth PCC reconstruction of Bellows Avenue from Main to Second Street, which included only storm and sanitary sewer repairs where needed. Bids were received and opened by the City of Atumwa on December thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. We had twenty-four bidders who took out plan sets and six bids of those six submitted bids. The low bidder was Jones Contracting Corp. of West Point, Iowa, the amount of nine hundred and ninety-eight thousand, five hundred and fifty-four dollars. I bid this with the option they could bid both streets together or bid one street from the other street by themselves. Thought that by allowing them to bid them together, by saving money on mobilization, two bidders did give a lower price for the combined combined street project, but three of them just added their two two bids together for the full one. So some of them saw savings in mobilization, some of them didn't. Jones Contracting Corp., they bid it the same way. So like their their individual bids added up to the combined bid. And I don't know if it was because of the timing of the bid or what, this came in well below estimate. We estimated this at one point three seven million, budgeted for one point three zero three million, and it came in under a million. So recommend that be awarded to Jones Contracting.
Does council have any questions for Philip? Not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Resolution number two twenty-four twenty-three, approving change order number one and accepting the work is finally complete and approving the final payment request for the twenty twenty-three RFP number two, James Street Sewer Repair Project. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number two twenty-four twenty-three.
With the recommendations presented.
Seven.
Okay, Philip.
Thank you. So this resolution will improve change order number one, which increases the contract amount by five thousand dollars, increasing the contract quantity from twenty-four thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars to twenty-nine thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars. What happened was, we got into James Street, dug down. We know there's water on the south side sometimes. We thought it was a drought, that there would be a whole lot of water. But we dug down and we had four pumps running constantly for like three weeks. And the water table just never went down. It just kept flowing in. So I mean, they worked on it for weeks and weeks. We had some of our guys come out, try to help pump the water main down or pump the water down. We eventually lowered the the sand points deeper, put a rock in there. Because every time we're pumping water out, we're pulling sand out. So this turned from like a small excavation to like a giant sinkhole. Took out a guy's driveway. And just just more water than I've seen in my eight years here. It was it was a it was not what was expected when we when we dug the hole. They did get a repair made, got it put back together, backfilled it. It was a lump sum project for, it was a lump sum cost to repair it. It's kind of different site conditions, so we thought it was fair. This is not the extra cost they had in it. They had much more extra cost than this. But we thought it was fair to kind of split the difference on how much they spent on it and how much we thought it would be.
Does council have any questions for Philip? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes. Okay, thank you.
Resolution number two twenty five, twenty twenty three, consideration of pilot youth government program. Recommendation passed in the adopted resolution number two twenty five, twenty twenty three.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation? Some move.
Second.
And I believe Councilman Galloway is going to present on this tonight.
I am, and I have Colby Striebe up here, who is going to assist me, too. So, Colby Striebe up here, works for the Atama School, Stool, School District, excuse me. She, the mayor and I sat down, and we talked about just the importance of youth voices, not only just in the school, but in our community, too. And from that, we had a conversation, and rather quickly, we put together this youth organization. And I'm just going to kind of read what's in this packet, and then I'll let Colby kind of take over, and explain a little bit about her role at the school district, and again, why this is important. So the Youth City Council will provide a platform for the youth in our community to voice their opinions and make a positive impact on our, on our city. So the Youth Council will comprise of seven members between the ages of fourteen to eighteen, and grades nine through twelve, who reside in Atama. They will be passionate about listening to youth voices in the community and serving for the betterment of our city. Interested youth will need to complete an application with letters of recommendation to be considered for membership. The Youth Council will adhere to the Atama Resolution Design for a Youth Council. The committee will be required to participate four to six hours of service every month, actually, I think we changed that to three to five. And have these two monthly meetings, with one monthly meeting focusing on organizing a nine eleven day of service, so really working to get the youth involved in the community. The mayor of Atama, a city councilperson, and the youth engagement coordinator of the Atama School District will be responsible for ensuring that the Youth City Council is successful, and that the youth voices are heard in our community. So this, what's before you today is to have a resolution to start a pilot program that'll last two years to help us develop, and then we can come back to the table and decide if this is something the city wants to continue to do. What's kind of cool is we have the director of the United Way here, too, and the United Way was awarded a three thousand dollar grant for a program like this, and would partner, partner with us if this is approved today, to help fund something like this, and really encourage our youth to be part of the community. So I'll let Colby just kind of take over and explain why this will really benefit our community and the youth.
So as Cara said, my name is Colby Striebe, I'm the Youth Engagement Coordinator for the Atama Community School Districts. Prior to taking this role this year, I was a youth counselor at Atama High School for the last six years, and time and time again, I've heard from our youth in our community that their voice is not heard. We're making these decisions that we think our youth want, and that's not what they want, we don't bring them to the table. So by creating this Youth City Council position, we would be able to give youth the voice that they deserve in our community. You know, these youth are our future, and they need to be a part of designing what this town is going to look like in our future. And another goal, I think, for Cara and Mayor Johnson and I, too, you know, this is giving them an inside look of what it looks like to be a part of our city, what it looks like to be on City Council, be a mayor, be a city administrator. You know, as, as a student, I think we, they're looking at the outside end, and they don't understand what that involves. So being able to be on this Youth Council kind of gives them an idea of what that looks like, and hopefully, when they turn eighteen, and they are a voting member of our community, they'll, they'll jump on that, and want to be a part of that, and get some young blood in here, no offense to everybody, but, yeah, you know, because they're our future, and they, they should be, they should be a part of our building, our, our town.
Yeah, and I would also comment, too, that while this idea is, it's still new and fresh, that we're hoping that there's, the first group, sorry, that the first group that comes into this council will really help establish what, if approved tonight, what that council looks like, and how we can really encourage youth voices, and again, like Colby said, we're hoping that when you feel more involved in the community, that you'll, you go off to college and you'll come back, and want to be part of our city, and you know, fill some of those positions that we have coming up and stuff, too. So we kindly hope that you all understand the importance of this and move forward with it. And will answer any questions?
Does Council have any questions? I think the other thing that we tried to do to gain maximum participation was, we recognize that some kids who reside in Atama might go to other school districts, so that does not negate them from being able to be part of the Youth Council, as long as they reside in Atama.
Right, so that, that was on the application that Cara and I worked on, that they just have to live in Atama, that you don't have to return to Atama.
Any questions or comments?
No, I would just like to encouragingly and happily motion that we accept this, because it's one of the best programs I've heard, so I motion we accept this program.
Anybody else have any comments? Second. Okay. Chris will take the role.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Resolution number two twenty seven, twenty twenty three, providing for the financial support of the Area Fifteen Regional Planning Commission for the fiscal year twenty twenty four, for a total amount of thirteen thousand five hundred and thirty dollars and thirty seven cents. Recommendation passed in the adopted resolution number two twenty seven, twenty twenty three.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation? Some move.
Second.
Phillip Radler, you're going to present.
So the, this one and the next one are items that we receive on an annual basis. This is, as mentioned, in accordance with the nineteen seventy three Article Agreement with Area Fifteen Regional Planning Commission, city is responsible for fifty three cents per capita. That this year, or this next year, will equate to a contribution of thirteen thousand five hundred and thirty dollars and thirty seven cents, and covers the fiscal year of twenty twenty five, so it's July one, twenty twenty four, to June thirty, twenty twenty five. We receive the information and request for the contribution, and this first one is larger of the two, and this is the, as mentioned, thirty thousand five hundred and thirty dollars, thirty seven cents. And we are proportionate share under that agreement.
Does Council have any questions for Phil?
Yeah, so, I mean, I, like you said, this is the larger, and we have another one, too, but, you know, I am a little disappointed not to see someone from Area Fifteen here today, and I would like them to come and just kind of give us an update, I feel like we haven't had a lot of updates. Actually, probably in the last year, I don't think we've had an update at all, so I would like to hear an update about what they're doing, and just kind of future plans.
Yeah, certainly, they, I mean, they sent a letter along with it, that just kind of covers some broad things, but definitely how it affects the city particularly. One of the notes said it would secure or two point one million dollars in grants in twenty two, twenty three. That represented a return of forty dollars in grant funds, every dollar of membership dues invested. But yeah, I would agree with that.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments for Phil? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Resolution number two twenty eight, twenty twenty three, providing for the financial support of the Area Fifteen Regional Planning Affiliation, R P A fifteen, in the amount of six thousand two hundred and ninety one dollars for the fiscal year twenty twenty four. Recommendation passed in the adopted resolution number two twenty eight, twenty twenty three.
Do the recommendations presented.
Second.
Okay, Phillip.
So similar to the last one, those are annual requests for matching funds. This one is particular to participation with Regional Plan Affiliation for R P A fifteen, which has been designated by transportation planning to the members, which we are a part of. City is estimated to receive over six hundred and sixty thousand dollars in financial support, and in return, the city is requesting a proportional share, which is this year, six thousand two hundred and ninety one dollars, and that is our portion of the local match, twenty seven thousand five hundred and fifty six.
Council have any questions, comments for Phil? Not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Resolution number two twenty nine, twenty twenty three, a resolution opposing Lion Energy's electric rate increase. Recommendation passed in the adopted resolution number two twenty nine, twenty twenty three.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation? Some move.
Second.
Okay, I want to go ahead and present on this. Recently, I'd gotten information from the Clean Energy Districts of Iowa, inviting the City of Atama to participate in the effort to oppose electric rate increases that are currently being proposed by Lion Energy. This increase is anticipated to be in two phases. If it's approved by the Iowa Utility Board, one increase will go into effect October of twenty twenty four, and the other one will be in twenty twenty five. The anticipated rates are estimated to increase residential customer rates by thirteen point four percent, and commercial rates up to twenty percent by the end of the second year. It's likely that these rate increases would have a negative impact on our citizens, especially those in Atama who are on a lower fixed income, as well as our efforts in furthering economic development. I would entertain any questions that the council might have.
I fully support this.
I didn't hear you, Karen.
I said I fully support this.
I do, too. Okay, if there's no further questions or comments, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is where I ask if there's anybody in the audience that would like to speak on any items that are not on tonight's agenda.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Councilman Rowe.
Well, this was supposed to be my last speech, but it turns out it's not. I just want to say, pardon my language here for a second, this has been one hell of a ride for eight years, we've seen a lot that's happened over the last eight years. And really, this has been an education that, that I never thought that I could have gotten, and I did bless some, so I'm really happy about that. I've had the privilege of meeting a lot of people over the last eight years that I may have never had the opportunity to meet, so that's really awesome, I owe, I owe a gentle gratitude to the city for allowing me to sit in this position. I, over the last eight years, that's something that I've really never lost sight of. It's, it's been a wonderful opportunity. A person who I have been able to recently start calling a friend, asked me not too long ago what I thought my biggest accomplishment was, and it took me a while to think about that, because I really don't think that, you know, any one of us really accomplish a lot on our own, so it took me a while to think about that, but I really, at the end of the day, I, I kind of settled on something. And I think that that accomplishment is this, when I ran for office, I said that, I said that I would always represent Atama passionately, I would always represent Atama professionally, and I would always look to the needs and desires of the citizens of this community over what my own personal agenda may be for any particular topic. I'm pretty confident over the last eight years that I've accomplished that, so with that, I'm a hundred percent sure that I've made mistakes in the last eight years, and, you know, that's fine, that makes us human. But I have learned a couple of things, and just a little bit of advice to the council summer, summer news, summer newer. And one of those things is no one of us have any power, so to speak, but we all have the power to persuade, and I would encourage everybody to use that power as much as possible, because I think that there are times when voices aren't raised, when voices should be raised, so I would encourage everybody to do that as much as possible. Any decision is just a decision, you got to have thick skin, I, I've learned that along the way, that there's been several times where we have been less than popular people, but you get through it, and as long as you're working in the best interest of those that you represent, then it's all good. And then the biggest thing that I've learned, haven't really practiced it too well, but is just shut up and listen. I think a lot of problems can really just be solved by, by listening, instead of opening your trap every chance you get. To, I want to say this really to the, the people of the community, I've had the privilege of access for the last eight years, and what I mean by that is, I've, I've been able to sit down and talk with city staff members, and I've got to know many of them very well, and the people of Atama, I, I know that you get frustrated every now and again, but you, you really need to know that the staff members that are coming to work every day for the City of Atama, they're some of the finest people that I've ever had the privilege of working with, so hats off to all of you, and everybody that's not in here tonight that works for the City of Atama, you do wonderful work, and I think that you're probably not told that enough, so thank you for everything that you do. I want to thank all of the current and prior elected officials that I've had the honor of working with. Thank you for always picking up the phone call, or answering my emails whenever I have a question or a concern. It's, don't know it, if you don't know, it doesn't go unappreciated. I hope, you know, everybody can see some of the great things that's happened in this community over the last eight years. We've seen a lot of infrastructural improvements, we've seen a downtown that moved from kind of nothing from where it was ten years ago to a very vibrant downtown now. We've seen quality of life initiatives that have taken shape over the last years, last eight years, we've seen housing improvements, we've seen retail improvements. There's a lot of good things, but I know that there's still a lot of challenges, and I would hope that this council that's coming up into the next year really continues to focus on making the economic development of this community a priority, but there are other things that need to be made a priority, too, and I hope that nobody loses sight of the fact that, you know, we still have human rights issues in the City of Atama that need addressing, we still have equality issues that need addressing, we still have homelessness issues that need addressing. I would hope that mental health stays at the forefront of all these council members' minds as we move forward. Same with substance use, and all of the other, all of the other human services related items that we have. I also hope that you all accomplish more than I ever could have on a city council, I, I truly mean that. I think that the, the only way that we accomplish things is if we move forward positively, and I, I hope for everybody that you make that happen. And I guess, not to ramble too much more, to the staff of, of the city, I just want to say thank you so much for putting up with me for the last eight years, you've educated me more than you'll ever know, so thank you for that. And to the citizens of Atama who voted for me twice to sit here and represent them, I just really want to say with as much humility and gratitude as, as I can possibly say, thank you.
Mark, I, I guess I would like to just take a minute, and also personally thank you for everything that you've done for the council and for me these last two years. I think everybody is very much aware that in twenty twenty two, you had a new mayor, you had four new city council people, and Mark was the only council member that was still on the council, and then in the historical perspective or experience, and we really have greatly benefited from that, and from your expertise, and from your historical ability to let us know how things have been done in the past. I think you were always very clear about what your personal feelings were about topics, and I always appreciated that, but when it got down to voting, I always felt like you did vote for what was in the best interest of the city, and I, I really respect you for that. And I wish you nothing but the best as you continue in your role as Director of O P, and don't hesitate to come around and see us once in a while.
Not every Tuesday, though.
Mary.
Fair enough.
I have a couple words, too, so. Mark, as your term comes, on the city council comes to an end, I find myself at a loss of words, and, but I'm going to try to take a minute. So you have meant a lot to me, you've been a mentor, a friend.
You've been a mentor, um, a friend, and a champion of the city, and your liter- leadership has been an invaluable asset to the city council and the community at large. Your unwavering commitment to the better, uh, men of our community is a testament to your character and love for our city. As I reflect on the countless hours, and there have been countless hours of guidance and support that you have provided me, I'm filled with gratitude. Your mentorship has been invaluable, and I have been honored to serve these last two years with you. Um, on behalf of this entire city, um, and community, I would like to extend my deepest gratitude for your service to our city. You have truly made a difference. Thank you for your leadership, your friendship, and your commitment to making our community a better place.
I, I did not write anything down. Mark, I hope it wasn't on the agenda to do so. Throughout the last two years, we've become pretty good friends, and I, and I appreciate that, especially when we started out, like Mayor said, with four brand-new council members and a mayor. It, it was really neat and helped us become council member and, and, uh, better because of your wisdom and, and your friendship and willing to, to coach us along. But I was thinking about it the other day. I think the best thing about meeting you and being friends with you is throughout my two years working with you, there, most of the time we agreed, but the times that we didn't agree, we sat man-to-man and still so can afterwards, and still remain friends. And in the world today, that's hard to do, so I appreciate that.
Mark, this is a kind of a sad moment for me too, and I, I want you to know that I have the benefit of being a citizen and a city council member. And, and in short, I want you to know what you've done for the city mattered. It mattered, it mattered to a lot of us. So, um, I appreciate what you've done. Out of, out of everything, what showed most about your characters, you had a passion for the city. You cared about the citizens, and I know that you're gonna carry that on. So even though this is your last night on the council, this is just the beginning, brother. You're gonna do great things, and I look forward to sticking behind you for everything. So I can't say thank you enough for all the help you've given me, um, and, and just what you've done for the city. So again, I, thank you.
To clarify, this is not his last meeting. We are gonna have one more. We're gonna have four.
Yeah, boy, at least one.
At least one, maybe three or four more. Four more? Okay.
I do want to also let the public know, and I believe Travis is already gonna be sending out a press release, uh, we are going to, uh, take some time to recognize and honor not only Mark Rowe, but Russ Hall and Sandra Pope for their work on, uh, city council. Uh, and that is going to occur on December twenty-eighth from eight-thirty to ten-thirty in the morning, and it's open to the public, and it will be in our conference room at the Deepo Building in downtown Atama. So we hope that everybody will come to that and extend their wishes to the three, uh, people who have, uh, been serving on the city council the last eight years and the last two years. So, uh, there'll be some more publicity put out on that, but we really hope a lot of people will show up. Does anybody have any other announcements that they would like to make tonight? I guess the only thing I, I would like to say on behalf of the city, uh, we wish everybody a joyous holiday season and a wonderful new year, and, uh, thank you for, uh, sticking with us this year. Like Mark said, it's had its ups and downs, but, uh, I'm sure every year is gonna be like that, but we have accomplished a lot of great things this year. Look forward to continuing that, uh, this next year, twenty-twenty-four. So, uh, uh, we wish everybody well during this holiday season. Uh, if there's no other announcements or comments that anybody would like to make, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some move.
Is there a second?
There better be. Someone second it.
I think there was only a few, Mark.
I'll second it. Chris will go ahead and take the role.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
I've waited a long time to do this. No.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
You can party here by yourself.
Thank you, everybody, for coming to tonight's council meeting, and, uh, happy holidays.